I can't.
What is his name?
No clue, I'm not good at that stuff.
Alright. Steven, what do we got?
One minute.
One minute?
One minute to count that.
Hi Tom.
Hey Tom.
Tom?
It's great, they're always welcome. Always welcome. Twenty eighth? Twenty, is it twenty eighth?
Yes, the chief told me.
Yeah, it's twenty eighth.
It was in the mailbag.
So that's Sunday, but it's supposed to rain though.
Yeah, no, but the twenty eighth is Saturday.
Yeah, twenty eighth is Saturday.
Twenty eighth is Saturday, right. You're recording?
I would've missed it with my advance.
It's Saturday.
Good evening ladies and gentlemen, welcome to Lacy Township. We will now begin the caucus meeting, October 24th, 2017, 7:00 PM. I'll begin with the statement. Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to Public Laws 1975. Said notice was advertised in the Lacy Beacon and was posted on the bulletin board showing the time and place of the meeting. This rise for alleged allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number one, best practices checklist.
And me, myself, and the chief financial officer receive our best practices checklist. Each year, the grouping of questions are different, they're not the same, and you have, we have to answer them, score them, send it back, and we have to get a certain score in order to receive 100% of our state aid, which we don't receive state aid, we receive energy tax receipts. And depending on your penalty, it can be reduced by 25%, 50%, 75%, 100%. But we did not have a penalty, so we will be getting 100% of our ETR money. But I do also need to, what I'm doing tonight, is present this to the governing body for them to just say, yes, you did see it, and it has been submitted to the state in accordance with Division of Local Government Services requirements. Anybody have any questions about it?
Explain item 21 up a little bit. If they were answered, no.
Okay, it talks about collective bargaining agreements and not compensating employees for sick leave accumulated after a certain date. Our current union contracts say that employees will receive compensation for sick time upon retirement up to their contractual amount, which I think is $15,000. Yes, so that has not been eliminated out of the contract yet. Any other questions?
Nope.
A lot of municipalities, Steve, don't have that, they don't have a cap on it, so you see these enormous payouts when people leave.
We have a cap on ours, and we've had a cap prior to the 1990s even.
Yeah.
Item number two, special use permit. Forked River Presbyterian Church, November 18th, 2017, Holiday Craft Fair.
This is the Forked River Presbyterian Church, this is an indoor event at their church, but since the church is a place of worship, this is outside the scope of their zoning permit, they need a special use permit, and again, they're coming for the governing body for consideration. They do, they do a lot of these, and they raise a lot of money to help off, to help their church members. Motion to accept?
Motion, move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I have nothing to add on, does anyone else?
Nope.
Motion to close?
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we will now begin Township of Lacy Township meeting. I'll read the statement, we'll salute the flag and have a moment of silence. Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to Public Laws of 1975. Said notice was advertised in the Asbury Park Press and the Lacy Beacon, and was posted on the bulletin board showing the time and place of the meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number one, second reading of ordinance 2017-26, authorizing the exchange of certain lands.
In accordance with Township of Lacy County, motion of state in Jersey, authorizing the exchange of certain lands with Block Hollow Chase Incorporated in accordance with the provisions of NJSA 48:12-16. In block 17, 21.01, we are exchanging, excuse me, in block 1901, lots 21.01, 20.02, 21.03, 21.07, 21.08, 21.10, 21.11, 21.13, 21.14, 21.19, 21.21, 21.24, 21.27, 21.28, 21.29, 21.30, 21.33, 21.34, 21.40, 21.43, 21.44, 21.46, we're giving them from the Township of Lacy to Fox Hollow Chase in exchange for 17, 21.01, lot 1.01. The second reading?
Second reading, we'll open the floor for public comment.
Seeing none, I make motion to close the floor.
Second. All in favor?
Aye. Move it.
Second.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Obsteed.
Mayor Cortolo?
Yes. Item number two, second reading of ordinance 2017-27, creating the position of senior maintenance repairer.
In accordance with Township of Lacy County, motion of state in New Jersey, amending and supplementing chapter 79 of the Township Code entitled Officers and Employees so as to create the position of senior maintenance repairer. This is just reconfiguring the name of the title, it was maintenance repairer A, and changing it to the proper civil service title of senior maintenance repairer.
Move it.
Second, no, second reading.
Second reading, open the floor to public comment.
Seeing none, I make motion to close the floor.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Move it.
Second.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mayor Cortolo?
Yes. Item number three, second reading of ordinance 2017-28, setting various salaries for the Department of Public Works.
In accordance with Township of Lacy County, motion of state in New Jersey, amending an ordinance entitled in accordance with Township of Lacy County, motion of state in New Jersey, affixing and deserving salaries, wages, and compensations to the officers, employees, and members of the governing body of the township. This is creating the salary for the formerly known maintenance repairer A, now senior maintenance repairer and mechanics helper salary.
Seeing, being a second reading, open the floor to public comment.
Seeing none, make motion to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion on the ordinance?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Cortolo?
Yes. Item number four, resolution 2017-284, authorizing the execution of an interlocal services agreement with the county of Ocean.
Resolution of Township of Lacy County, motion of state in New Jersey, authorize the execution of interlocal services agreement with the county of Ocean for police services under the Ocean County Gang, Gun, and Narcotics Strike Force. This is where we share officers with the county on different and specialized tasks force. We currently have an officer that's assigned there, that will be finishing up their tour very shortly, and this is just renewing the contract.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Cortolo?
Yes. Item number five, resolution 2017-285, authorizing a change order for the Bayberry Village Phase III project.
Resolution of Township of Lacy County, motion of state in New Jersey, authorizing execution of amendment to the contract with Johnson Baron Corporation for the Bayberry Village Phase III project. This contract is a deduction from the original contract price in the amount of $18,991.55. So the original contract price was 151,826, we are now reduced down to 132,834,45.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Cortolo?
Yes. Item number six, resolution 2017-286, awarding a contract for the purchase of diesel fuel.
Resolution of Township of Lacy County, motion of state in New Jersey, awarding a contract for the purchase of diesel fuel to Riggins Incorporated. We are awarding this for a two-year period from November 2nd of 17th to November 1st of 2019. This is under the Stafford Township Cooperative Purchasing, which we are a member of, there are 33 different agencies in this co-op.
Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Cortolo?
Yes. Item number seven, resolution 2017-287, authorizing the placement of a lien on block 101.02, lot 1, for property maintenance.
Resolution of Township of Lacy County, motion of state in New Jersey, accepting the certification of the Director of Public Works concerning costs incurred in the removal of debris and cleaning up of the property located at 1201 Borealis Court, and authorizing the placement of a lien against said property for said costs. Total amount of this lien is $112.93.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Cortolo?
Yes. Item number eight, resolution 2017-288, authorizing the placement of a lien on block 822, lot 5, for property maintenance.
Resolution of Township of Lacy County, motion of state in New Jersey, authorizing, accepting the certification of the Director of Public Works concerning costs incurred in the removal of debris and cleaning up of the property located at 12, 1012 Laura Boulevard, and authorizing the placement of a lien against said property for said cost in the amount of $132.54.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Cortolo?
Yes. Item number nine, resolution 2017-289, authorizing the placement of a lien on block 4106, lot 1, for property maintenance.
Resolution of Township of Lacy County, motion of state in New Jersey, accepting the certification of the Director of Public Works concerning costs incurred in the removal of debris and cleaning up of the property located at 2512 Smith Road, and authorizing the placement of a lien against said property for said cost in the amount of $73.73.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Cortolo?
Yes. Item number 10, resolution 2017-290, authorizing the refunding of deposits.
Resolution of Township of Lacy County, motion of state in New Jersey, authorizing the refund of deposits held for the use of municipal facilities.
Move it.
Second.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Cortolo?
Yes. Item 11, resolution 2017-291, authorizing the payment of township bills.
Resolution of Township of Lacy County, motion of state in New Jersey, authorizing the payment of township bills in the amount of $882,535.70.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
And Mayor Cortolo?
Yes, with noted abstention on T0035. TNM and Associates. Item number 11, resolution 2017-291, authorizing the payment of township bills.
We just took that one.
Item number 12, motion to approve caucus meeting minutes of October 12th, 2017.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item 13, motion to approve township meeting minutes of October 12th, 2017.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve raffle license application for Lacy Township High School boosters, Lacy Moose Lodge, and the Rotary Club of Forked River.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve bingo license for the Knights of Columbus.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We, yeah, we're gonna do this after.
Comments from the committee, Deputy Mayor Juliana?
Thank you Mayor. First, I'd just like to let people know, the calendar that you get in the mail for the recycling, and has all of our different functions that happen all year long, which is mailed to the house or on our website, but I'd like to remind people that leaf pickup is all done by zone. The first date is November 13th, second date is November 27th, and the third date is December 11th. That will be, and they're all done by zones, if you're not sure, the calendar was either mailed, or you can go on our website, and I believe that whole calendar sits on our website, so you can look and see when your zone is. Tuesday, of course, is Halloween, please be careful out there with the children being up and about. Municipal Alliance, we had the honor to go to their last Saturday to the Halloween party with, at the middle school, which was very well attended. I don't think there was room in there to even move around at all, so it was well attended, and I wanted to thank Heather Scanlon and the Municipal Alliance for putting that on and doing a great job. Huffy Wallace Park is, I think it's almost...
It should be done.
Yeah.
It should be done.
That's what I thought, I rode past and it seemed like, well, I walked past it really, because I was walking around the park a little bit, trying to get some exercise, so it looked like it was almost pretty well done. We had our new Director of Public Works start on Monday, Dan Miguel. He's getting his feet wet this week to try to get used to the employees that are back there, different things riding around in the town. I rode around with him for a while to give him a little bit of an idea, but I think Rob Craft is doing a great job, and as well as Veronica, doing a great job to get him acclimated in his new position back there. He will be coming to all of the different organizations in town after, I told him to get himself situated with the job atmosphere first, then come to the township meeting to introduce himself, then different organizations, which he will be doing after he gets all acclimated back there. I'm gonna ask Bill Moss to give us a little bit, you know, I had the honor to attend the Old Guard meeting. Fabulous bunch of people, the turnout, what is it really, Bill, explain those, come up here and explain to us a little bit about what the Old Guard does.
Okay, the Old Guard is a, it's like a gentleman's club, strictly a...
Doesn't sound right.
I can't do it.
We're in trouble now.
It's like a gentleman's club, it's, we had, we had a couple of women, but they paid themselves out. You have to be at least, it's 55, it's either 55 or 65, to be a member, and we meet every Monday morning. You can be there at 8 o'clock, our meetings don't start till 10. Give you an idea how, they donate to different organizations, they have scholarships that they give at the high school. Your underwater team, last year, we gave them a complete $1,000 wet suit. It's, it's all from the, things that we get from the members, membership and donations. Any gentleman are allowed to come in and join, the dues are $5 a year, that's all you pay in dues. Everything else is through donations or through things that we may handle locally, which isn't, not that too many local. Let's see what else. I gotta keep...
I put you on the spot, Bill.
Got me going on here.
How many members?
We have over 100 members, it fluctuates up and down because some move away, as you know, Mr. Johnson moved to Ohio, and some pass away.
The meeting I was at, Steven, there was 68.
There was 68 there, yeah, last Monday morning, total members. We have our own bocce team, which thanks to the township, we now have new bocce courts over there by the warden house, which we play bocce every Monday morning after our meetings, and our last game's gonna be this next Monday, will be the end, end of the season for us. And I can say my team is in first place, so nobody can beat us.
Good man.
That's what I like about this, like about the bocce.
This was a setup, wasn't it?
Right after our meetings, the women's club come in, we make sure the tables are set up for them with the tables, so that all the women's club, they have their card games every Saturday, so, every Monday afternoon. And it's just an all-around thing. Just to give you an idea of how the membership is, you come in, it costs you a quarter for a cup of coffee, and a dollar seventy-five for pork, brogan cheese sandwich if you wanna eat. And we have donation stores that actually donate to us some of the food that we get. But it's an all-around social club, what it boils down to. Okay?
Thank you Veronica. That's, some of the organizations, and that's why we started it last year, them coming and explaining to themselves what they're all about, and that's what we're gonna continue on doing. So people out there realize the importance of the clubs and what they do do for our community. Also, I was, had the honor to go to the Rolling Thunder meeting there, at our town community hall. There, again, the things that they do for the vets and the MIA's, it's unbelievable, I really sat and I talked to the gentlemen afterwards for two and a half hours. We stayed there and just talked about it and realized what they do, they're gonna be coming to the next meeting to speak a little bit. Other than that, Mayor, that's it, I hope everybody enjoys trick or treat. I will be going out trick or treating this year.
Can you just stop this?
I don't know, I think something with a puppet, I'm not sure.
Well, I'll be sure to visit. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Juliana, Committee McQuinn.
Thank you.
Thank you Mayor. Just touching on what Nikki talked about, the Old Guard, Municipal Alliance, they're just two of the outstanding groups we have in this town here that, you know, a lot of people don't know about, and it's just so important, I know the Old Guard, I've been invited to a number of times over the years.
They're why you enjoy it.
Actually, I qualify, you didn't fit it, well, no, 65, not yet, but the other one I do qualify. So does he, so don't kid himself. But, you know, it's, it is like that, Bill said, it's a social, you know, event, a lot of gentlemen in this, in this town, they're really truly look forward to it, because there's not a lot of other things that they go out to during the course of the week. And when I was there, over the years, they, they always make you feel so welcome, even though you're an outsider, you're just there for the day, they truly bring you into the mix and make you feel like you're part of the group. You know, it's, it's something, I've been very privileged to be able to attend over the years, at some point in time, I hope to, you know, become part of the club, but, you know, send our thanks back, because they truly do a good, a great job in all the little things that they do behind the scenes here in Lacy Township though. Same with Municipal Alliance, Heather Scanlon and her group, you know, they, they go above and beyond, the Halloween thing last week was great for the kids, tomorrow, they have a senior luncheon in town here for the other, you know, for the seniors in town, they, you know, just try to cover all their bases and help out, and provide different social events for so many different groups in town, so. Heather and all the Alliance members also, you know, deserve a tremendous amount of thanks. I have a couple announcements here I have to make for the, Chief Devell asked me to make. This Saturday, this Saturday is our trunk or treat in town here, the Lacy Township Chamber of Commerce is hosting their trunk or treat event this Saturday, October 28th, 2017, from 1:00 PM to 4:00 PM at Gilly Park. Members of the Lacy Township Police Department will be on scene providing handouts to the children, including but not limited to coloring books, water bottles, police badge stickers, keychains, and pencils. In addition, the police department will have one of their new patrol vehicles there for the children to take pictures with. If anyone's interested, if anyone has any questions regarding to the trunk or treat event, contact the Lacy Township Chamber of Commerce at 609-607-7670. And I just want to point out that anyone that watches this or anyone's here tonight, in the mailbag this week, it has it listed as happening on Sunday afternoon, but it is scheduled, it's Saturday afternoon from 1:00 to 4:00. So if you know anybody in your family that's gonna be going, just make sure they realize it's Saturday afternoon. Next one is Save Lives, Don't Text and Drive, the PSA. Lacy Township Police Department along with the Menorca Harbor EMS and Lacy Township High School telecommunications class completed their third public safety announcement in a series that began in September 2016. The PSA was Halloween-themed and directed towards distracted driving. To watch the PSA, please log on to the Lacy Township Police Department's website at lacypd.org. Please note that in 2015, 391,000 people were injured in motor vehicle crashes involving distracted driving, and 3,477 people were killed across the United States. Distracted driving enforcement and education continues to remain a top priority for the Lacy Township Police Department. I want to thank, thank Tom and the students, you know, for the role you played in this, because it's you guys that filmed it and put it all together for us.
Jeremy Much, Mr. Herbert.
You guys are a team, we consider you both a team, and the kids do a great job for us, but I also want to extend a special thanks to the mayor, because, you know, Peter handles this at the county level, and he's been involved in this since it was first put into play back in 2016, so.
The kids deserve, I appreciate that, but the kids work very hard and the police, they did, they really did it.
Did a good job, yeah, yeah.
It's a critical message, and thanks for bringing it to the floor.
Okay, next one is Gilly Park, the Gilly Park Skate Park event, the next Gilly Park Skate event will be on Friday, November 3rd, 2017, from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM. This will include a Halloween costume contest that will be judged at 8:00 PM. There'll be a first, second, and third place prize for the best dressed costume, which will be provided by the Lacy Municipal Police Foundation, Lacy Township Recreation, and Lacy Township Municipal Alliance. They'll have the DJs starting at 6:00 PM, as they have in the past, along with other fun activities, including the gaming trail, it'll be there that night. As always, Lacy Township Police Department, along with our local fire departments and first aid squads, will all be there. These events are all coordinated by the Lacy Police Foundation, Lacy Township Recreation, and the Municipal Alliance. Anyone has any questions, please contact the police department at 693-1100, extension 2203. We've announced a number of times over the last couple of months about the child safety seat checks that we've been having over probably the last eight months. They are now finished for the year, but we are gonna restart them again in 2018, so if you have a infant child seat that you're putting in your car room properly, as I did in the beginning when I had my grandson, it's, it's well worth it to have the police department show you how to do it. We're gonna restart in the spring of 18, but if you want to have something done in the meantime, if you do buy a child's seat and you want to have it put in and have it checked, you can make an appointment to the police department at 693-6636, and they'd be happy to give you an appointment to come over here and have it checked and make sure you did it right. And lastly, the Law Enforcement Explorer Post 1, the Ocean County Chief of Police, Law Enforcement Explorer Post 1, is still looking for a few more young adults from ages 14 to 21 that are interested in a career in law enforcement to join. For additional requirements and information, you can log on to the police website at lacypd.org, and you can click on the box that states "About Us" and scroll over to the Police Explorer Program. I know I've talked to a lot of people in town, their children have been involved in this program over the last couple of years, that, that really enjoyed it, and it made quite a difference in a lot of these kids' lives, so. If you have anybody you know that's interested in getting involved in law enforcement, it really truly is a great program. And Chief Devell works hand-in-hand with Sheriff Mastinotti up at the county, and they do a lot of events together, so. Put the word out there, and if you know somebody, time is running out before they get started, so. Thank you Mayor.
Committee McQuinn, thank you. Committeeman Kennis?
Thank you Mayor. I'm just gonna, since it's our last meeting before Election Day, I just want to remind everybody to vote, we're gonna have a new, so we have a new governor this year, and I also want to just remind everybody that we have two people running for township committee and four people running for school board, and I just want to especially locally wish them all the best of luck. It's very difficult and time-consuming to campaign, so, best luck to everybody in the way to get the vote. So I have Mayor.
Thank you Committeeman Kennis, Committeeman McDonald.
Thank you Mayor. I too also got to attend the Municipal Alliance Halloween Party, and I gotta tell you, there was some scary looking creatures walking around over there, so it was...
Why'd you look at me when you said that?
Hey, if the shoe fits. If the shoe fits, wasn't it? That was good. Huffy Wallace Park, which Deputy Mayor Juliana mentioned, is, I think, done, except for the basketball court, the line in the basketball court. They were over there yesterday dumping four feet of wood chips, so that the kids fall, they don't really get hurt that much. I would encourage everybody to go, to go out there and take a look at it, it's gorgeous, they've done a great job. And we will be doing a grand opening, a re-grand opening for that in, in May or sometime, and it just might be a softball game, which the township committee members are going to...
Wonderful. Oh, that's dangerous.
I know, very, very dangerous.
Get the waivers in. Yeah, exactly.
The other thing is, I've been talking about this for a while now, we finally got it together, is Lacy in lights, which will be to decorate your house, and we're gonna send the recreation buses around and so forth, that is already set up. This is the flyer, all homes must be completed by December 15th for a viewing tour. Go to Lacy Recreation Facebook, you can click on to that and register your house, and we'll set that up, or you can contact the recreation office at 609-693-1100, extension 2203. I too, we got Halloween coming up, so please, please, please be careful and vote, this is, it's, it's, it's part of your duties as a citizen, in my opinion, to get out and vote for the candidates of your choice, and I think it's really, really important. And I think everyone who's eligible to vote should vote, and I'd like to see us up around 90, 95%, because I think that's where we need to be at. Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you Committeeman McDonald. I'd like to report a couple of brief things tonight, I was fortunate, the Vice President of Robert Wood Johnson Medical got in touch with me, wanted to meet over here at Town Hall, we did meet on the 18th of this month, he wanted to highlight some of his services. And at no charge, he'd be looking to have a Mayor's Wellness Day, go out to some of our senior communities, do various medical screenings at no charge, even over at the schools, concussion protocol screening for our athletes, scoliosis, different things like that. So I will be having a conversation possibly with Committeeman McDonald, if there's some opportunity with some of the athletes or recreation, but it's an opportunity here, I call it low-hanging fruit, if they can come and offer that service to our people, I'd graciously accept it. Two nights ago, I was at Carney Federal Savings Bank at around 8:00 PM, I was with the Business and Professional Women's Association of Southern Ocean County, they had a meeting over there, it was very... They had a meeting over there, it was very well-attended. I was welcomed, and I want to just extend a formal thank you to the board membership over there. There were several of Lacey businesses that were represented. They, that is where they go, they talk, they make decisions, and they are one of the oldest and longest-running groups in Ocean County. So I was very happy and pleased, they've made progress through the years, they've got an active association, so it was nice to be part of that. I may have mentioned at the last meeting, but it's merits re-mentioned. Home Depot's 10-year anniversary was about two weeks ago, so they've been a great corporate partner in our town, and we no longer have to go out of town, they've been here for 10 years, it's hard to believe, but it was a bit of a celebration, and we very much enjoyed it. I too want to echo the sentiments of my colleagues here, with our Municipal Alliance in particular. I've said in public company and in private, the amount of participation that our Alliance receives trumps towns even two and three times the size of ours, and so that's no light lift, and that's really a direct reflection of the efforts of the Municipal Alliance leadership and the volunteers, so I'm very proud of them. They do a lot to keep our kids off alcohol, problem drinking, and drugs. Veterans Commission, I'll close with this. We had our meeting just the other night, we're looking at, on 11, 11, 11, at 10:00 a.m., we'll have our ceremony at Bicentennial Park. We certainly wish our veterans very, very well. We would like, for town people and veterans alike, we have that ceremony, rain or shine, all are welcome. I'd like to close with, yes, this is an important election year, men and women have died for your right to vote, please get out and vote, it's very important here at the local level, with what I believe we do up here as a team, as well as at the state level. And with that, I'll close my comments and open the floor to public comment. Yes. You want to go? Okay.
There's no reason at that time.
Pretty good at it now.
Yes, sir. Name and address, please.
Jesse Ernststrom, Buttonwood Drive. Is that debate on Monday open to the public?
Absolutely.
Okay, cool. It's Monday, the 30th, we're having a candidate debate, good luck. I'll see you there, also, good luck on Election Day. Everyone should go out and vote, for sure.
Jesse, just, people know it's at the school.
Oh, yeah, it's at the lecture hall, at the school. Thanks, Eric.
Thank you, sir. Sir?
Paul Truax, 902 Capesand Drive, Forked River. I've been in town for seventeen years. I think most of the board members know that I'm a part of a volunteer organization known as Convention Estates. Convention Estates is a volunteer organization, three main people across the United States, and we have organizations in each state with a state director, a team, district captains for each district, and the idea is to get enough participation from the grassroots to citizens to support an Article V Convention, and an Article V Convention is one in which we get enough state legislatures to join, they get an opportunity to have a convention to discuss amendments that will make corrections to our constitution, to our federal, well, to our federal government and our constitution. We stand for three principles. One is term limits for Congress, second is fiscal responsibility, and third is to reduce the, or limit the jurisdiction power of the federal government. So I submit, I know I submitted a letter to the town to ask for a resolution, I found out tonight it's probably because I just haven't gotten around to it, because I know it's a busy season. So, the idea now, we have twelve states that have applied to Congress for Convention Estates. We need to get thirty-four to enact the, then to Congress to have the whole, Congress to appoint a convention, a convention. Thirty-four states get together, all states will join, fifty states, to propose amendments or mending the Constitution to restore the things I've mentioned. In New Jersey, we have two resolutions, one in the Senate and one in the Assembly. We have twenty sponsors and co-sponsors in New Jersey, and we have over fifteen thousand, close to sixteen thousand supporters and volunteers in New Jersey. District 9, we have seven-hundred-and-fifty-eight volunteers and supporters in township or district, and we have the Assemblyman Rumpf, Assemblywoman Gove, and Senator Connors have all signed more than sponsorship for it. So this next step of our, next phase of our movement is to try to get towns, municipalities and organizations to support us with a resolution, and that's what I've provided to the town. If I need to provide more information for clarity, I'm certainly willing to do that.
I appreciate your comments tonight. I was not sure that you would be here, in anticipation that you may have been, I did, I'm in the process of reviewing what you wrote here.
Yeah.
I think where I come out in it, at my core and my DNA, I do think the government has broad overreach. I want them out of my food, out of my car, out of my home.
Yeah.
And I do think the power should rest with the states. I'm a fiscal conservative, I'm a social conservative.
I appreciate that.
So what I can tell you is that we will take this under consideration and we'll look at it, but I'm not gonna jump and make any knee-jerk, short-sighted.
Aye, I appreciate that.
You know, we just need some time, as you've mentioned earlier, this is a busy season.
Yeah.
It's busy throughout the town, and in anticipation of the holidays as well and township business, so I appreciate you coming tonight, and it's the people's microphone, and I want to thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Now, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
You have twelve states, you said, that are on board already, add in the thirty-four, whatever you need?
That's correct.
What does it take to get number thirteen? Is there a certain number of municipalities that have to be on board, a certain number?
No, actually, it's, actually, it's the legislative districts. Legislative districts will be in Trenton, and we need the Assembly on board and the Senate on board.
Okay, so you need a vote from the entire Assembly and the entire State Senate?
The governor is out, but he doesn't have a choice in this.
Okay.
This is the Assembly and the Senate.
So a positive vote from the Senate and the Assembly will move it to the thirteenth spot on the list?
That's correct.
What states do, what states do you have involved with this?
Right now?
Yeah, you can bid it.
Well, I'm ahead, Florida, Alabama, Georgia, Tennessee, Texas. It's possible, we got four states this year. This project started in 2013, to the beginning of this year, we had eight, this year alone, we picked up Texas, Missouri, South Dakota, and one other, I forget. My memory's not that good.
And other than, you know, Senator Connors and the ninth, are there other districts that have signed on, or?
Well, yeah, there's twenty districts that have co-sponsored, legislators ask co-sponsors.
Okay. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir, Mr. Moss.
Bill Moss, Miss Capesand Drive, Forked River Beach. I came here because, if you recall, about four months ago, I came to the council and I asked if you could look at a traffic situation on Jones Road, where people were coming straight across and making the turn. I came here today because I want to thank everyone here, especially Veronica, for getting that taken care of. I rode by there this past week, and there's now a "Do Not Enter" sign with an arrow pointing north, so they're not supposed to go across that. And just to tell you how bad it was, I have seen a garbage truck go across that, I mean,